Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We have an invocation by Reverend Thomas Sepo. Tom?
Well, before I pray, certainly on behalf of, yeah, we can all stand, I'm sure that it's crowded in here tonight, but certainly on behalf of not only the citizens of St. Clair County, but the ministers, we want to thank you for your faithful service and your diligence. This past year has been a phenomenal year, and wanted you to know also that there is about 20 to 25 pastors every Thursday morning that pray for you. So just keep that in mind and know that God is doing some great things in our community. So let's just pray. Father, it's a privilege just to gather here tonight on behalf of this great county of St. Clair that you have placed us in. There's so much that we can be thankful for as we pause and reflect upon all the great things that have happened this past year. Lord, the challenges that we've had which make us stronger. Lord, I pray that you would continue to guide this council and this commission in all of the affairs that we have to deal with. Lord, you've put a great team together, and it's so exciting to see what's on the horizon for St. Clair County in 2015. We ask that you would continue to give favor. We ask that you continue to give wisdom and guidance and direction to each member with all of their responsibilities. We're praying, Lord, that you would bring even jobs this way and cause people to be attracted to St. Clair County. Lord, we just stop right now and just say thank you for all the many blessings that you've given to us. Now, continue to lead us and guide us in this meeting, and we'll be careful always to give you praise, honor, and glory, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will run the roll call. Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Graytop?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
If you would all rise, commissioners, raise your right hand. Do you silently swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Michigan, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of St. Clair County Commissioner in and for the county of St. Clair and the state of Michigan according to the best of your ability? Congratulations.
I would entertain a motion for a appointment of a temporary chair.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would move to place the name of Jeff Bohm in nomination for temporary chair.
Second?
We have a motion and support for Jeff Bohm as temporary chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like a nomination and election of a permanent chairperson.
Chairman, at this time, I would move to place the name of Jeff Bohm in nomination as a permanent chairperson.
Second?
Discussion. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. I'd like a nomination and election of vice chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Bill Graytop be the vice chairperson of the county board.
Support.
Anybody else? Home favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item number eight, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second?
Discussion. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 10, minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Report.
Discussion. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number 11, citizens wishing to address the board. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none. Item 12, consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of items 12A through 12E of the consent agenda.
Report.
Discussion. Home favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item 13, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before us at this time? Item 14, appointment of sergeant-at-arms. These are my appointments, if I'm unmistakant.
They are.
Old Howard. Not to be appointed sergeant-at-arms, so if you...
What are the procedures for...
You just keep doing, you just keep, you just keep doing what you're...
I'm kidding.
You just keep doing what you're doing, Howard.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the appointment. Do I need to have this motion? Okay. I'd like to move to accept the appointment of Howard Hydeman as the sergeant-at-arms.
Support.
Everybody supports it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Six, one. Appointing to standing committees. I would like to appoint the following. Carl Tomian to the Human Services, Howard Hydeman to Environmental Public Works Committee, Tom Riley to the Judiciary Public Safety, Dave Rushing to the Ways and Means Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to accept the appointments of the 2015, 2016 standing committees as given by Chairman Bohm.
Second?
Discussion. There may be a couple in here that we may have to make some tweaks to. Next meeting or two, we'll take a look at that. So if there's any things that the commissioners can't attend, whatever, just get back with the group and we'll be able to plug some. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item D, the commissioner bylaws for 2015, 2016.
This time, I'd like to move to adopt the Board of Commissioners' bylaws for the 2015, 2016 as presented.
Report.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed. Item E?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the opening of an impressed checking account at Town where Bank and Trust for the Blue Water Convention Center operations with the following authorized signatories. Jennifer Defrend, SMG's accounting HR manager, Kim Apple, SMG's general manager, Rob Churchill, SMG's assistant general manager, Kelly Roberts Burnett, St. Clair County treasurer, and Jay DeBoyer, St. Clair County clerk.
Second?
Discussion.
What is a definition of an impressed checking account?
It's just a descriptive of it. It's always held in a specific balance, is that probably the best way to say it? You set a balance for that account, and you spend X this month, you do a replenishment, you take it back to that balance, and you have the balance for that balance. How's that? Does that make sense?
It's kind of like a petty cash register system.
Like what I give my lawyer? When he spends it down, then I give him more.
Call the retainer.
Thank you.
Those are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Doesn't matter to me, we can get into goals and priorities now, or do we want to run to the rest of the meeting adjourned and then do that? How would, how would the board?
I like that idea.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah. So what we're going to do essentially is we'll just pass on F, and then we'll go on adjournment, and then we'll go, come back to the setting of the goals and priorities. It's...
Should be done in the meeting, shouldn't it?
Well, yeah, don't adjourn.
Don't adjourn.
They're doing it at the end, which is fine. That's because we're going to move around here, and it's going to be much less formal and just...
You have that to be a discussion issue, not a deliberation and vote issue? I mean, you're going to...
Yeah, it's not, no voting, just going through. What we have is from four years ago, all the things that I sat down with Mr. Kaufman. We're going to kind of look and review and some of the other initiatives and just more of a old-fashioned powwow, so...
We can defer maybe after '17 to have a motion to go through the setting of goals and priorities and adjourn, only one motion maybe at that time?
We'll do it at the end. We won't adjourn, we'll do it before adjournment. Let's go to the administrators' report.
Just a couple of, just a few very quick items I'd like to share with you. First of all, I'd like to introduce our new Veterans Affairs Director, Chris Smith. I'm not sure how many of you have met Chris yet. He was at the department head meeting, shared a little bit about himself. If you want to just take a moment and share a little bit about where you came from and what you hope to accomplish.
Right up to the podium. This is, this should get a chance to get on TV here, so...
Just to address the commissioners, I spent about, doing 21 years in the Marine Corps. Prior to this job, I was working with the Wounded Warrior Regiment, which is District Engine Support Coordinator with the Marine Corps, a liaison with the wounded, ill, and injured Marines, getting them help, assistance when they come back to the hometown USA, which I was covering, Michigan and Indiana. So I had four years of that, and then before that, of course, I, throughout my years, I've deployed out to Iraq, Afghanistan, and the Horn of Africa, and spent some time overseas when I was on active duty in Japan, and it was a real, it was a, probably, like I always tell everybody, it was one of the best things I did is join the military, because back when I was, in '94, when I was 22, I was doing nothing but just beating, beating the cops by and trying to catch me. So it was a, it was a great, great thing that I did because it gave me a lot of focus, and I think a lot of these young, young men and women could use a little focus also. So I'm also involved with the sports programs in Cross Lex, in Cross Lexington, that's where I'm from. My kids both go there. I have a senior and a sophomore in high school right now, so I help their strength and conditioning program, and I, and I do, I assist coach with the basketball and the football. So other than that, I look forward to moving forward with the Veterans Affairs, helping out our veterans, and really making it a welcoming atmosphere in there for all our veterans coming in in the future, and then also really set, I feel like I set myself up real well being in the director position to be able to help the most, and also I have a lot of connections up in Detroit at the regional offices and things like that. So it, I think we'll be able to really, really move forward with the claim process and also getting a lot of little questions that may take months, I may be able to fast-track a couple of things. So looking forward to working with yourselves and also with all the veterans.
Okay. Just thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Howard?
I told Chris earlier that I heard his commercial, or the commercial from the Veterans Affairs Department on the radio, and it's just an excellent one to reach out to those veterans in our community and invite them to come in for an assessment of services that may be available to them. Yeah, very well done. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. And then also spinoff from that is, you know, one of my other future goals is I plan on being involved in a lot of more community events, parades, whatever it takes. I'm going to have banners, stuff like that, I want to get a name out there, because I think there's a large population out here in our community that doesn't even know we exist, so, so that's, along with the commercials, we're definitely going to get more involved with the community events. Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome, Chris.
Yes, Chris.
Chris was originally hired a number of months ago as a Veterans Affairs Counselor. When that position for the director came open, there was a national search conducted, and the Veterans Affairs Committee interviewed a number of individuals, and Chris came out on top by a wide margin. His leadership skills and his ability to pull together a team were very apparent to the Veterans Affairs Committee, and that's one of the primary tasks that we hope that he'll address while he's here. So welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
Also, Mike Hilfinger from Strategic Communication Solutions is here. We've been working with Mike on a number of projects. I'm not sure if all of you have met him yet. Do you want to share just a little bit? He was at the department head meeting again this week as well, and spent just a few minutes sharing with the department heads who he is, where he's from, and what he'll be doing with us.
Thank you. Commissioner, my name's Mike Hilfinger, I'm with SCS. I'm basically their vice president of economic development. My background is in economic development. I was with Wayne County as their director of real estate business development for about four years, and then before that, I was with GM Corporate Real Estate for 12 years. So I have some background in development. Right now, some of the things I'm trying to do with St. Clair County, we worked on US EDA grant for some, a planning grant for Kimball Township. We're also looking at a Department of Labor grant for American apprenticeship grant, seeing if we can collaborate with other communities. And also, a couple of projects in Marine City that we're working on right now to assist with getting the right players in the, in the room to make sure that we can get this development going. So anything that we can do to assist, assist St. Clair County in meeting their objectives and goals, that's, that's what we're here for. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Just real quickly, the, if you can mark your calendars, for the 27th of March, I realize it's a ways out yet, that's a Friday, that will be the State of the County address down in Marysville at Alexander's. It will be over the lunch hour from roughly 11:30 until about 1 o'clock or 1:30. Some of you may have recalled receiving some emails over the Christmas holidays regarding an incident at the airport. I've received notice today that the NTSB will begin their investigation this week on that incident. The site has been cleaned up, the airport has been, airport staff has been working very closely with the property owner and their insurance company, as well as the Kimball Township Fire Department to get that site cleaned up and ready for the investigation. If you'd like to know a little bit more about that, please feel free to see me or give the airport director a call. The Convention Center is starting to come together very, very quickly. There is still a lot of small work that needs to be done. All of the large systems are in place. Next week, our architect will be meeting with the construction manager, begin with their walkthrough to develop punch lists for the facility. That probably will take a couple of weeks to develop the punch list and then ensure that all the issues have been addressed. We are in the process of finalizing our priority list of FFNE items and placing orders for that material. Many of the systems out there have not been fired up and tested yet. They've been hooked up, but we're working on some issues with some of our utility companies to ensure that the separation of utilities and billing will go smoothly and successfully before we start firing up and testing some of the HVAC and the electrical systems on site. We did have a little bit of an issue with some of the electrical systems over the weekend, and as a result, we used one of the portable generators that the county owns to bring it on-site and use that to help for a short period of time before DTE got on-site. So it was a nice test of that equipment, and it worked very well. The, you will receive the updated financial report for the Convention Center at the full board agenda, which will be out next week, which is when you typically receive it. We'll keep you abreast. Our, our owner meetings at the facility have now been moved to weekly since there's so many last-minute things to do, so we are meeting up there every single week. Those of you that are on the change order committee, keep an eye out for notice of a meeting coming up probably next week to sit and talk about some additional issues that came up that we'll be sharing with you. We are communicating with the Liquor Control Commission on some changes that need to be made to the facility too, primarily the observation deck, what we need to do on the deck to ensure that we comply with all the requirements of the state of Michigan and are able to actually use that deck for certain events that may occur during the summer months. If you have any questions about the Convention Center, or if you'd like to walk through, please feel free to give me a call. We are going to make arrangements to hold a department head meeting there probably next month and let all the department heads have a walk-through. Kim Appel, the general manager, was at the department head meeting earlier this week, and there were a number of individuals that had some questions about the capacity of the facility, rates, the number of beds that are available in the community to support some of the organizations that they belong to, that they'd certainly like to reach out to and try and get them to bring their conferences or conventions to this area as well. We are beginning to book the facility, actually have been for quite some while. Kim gave a very brief, a quick report at the department head meeting as well of some of the conventions that she's been working with and some of the marketing efforts. We can certainly develop a list of that, put it in writing, and share it with you if you would be interested. And I want to thank you for setting up the account. That makes it a little bit easier. On our staff, our arrangement with SMG is that they actually pay the bills, they're going to operate the facility for us, and we'd much rather have them take care of all of the bookkeeping and just provide monthly reports to Ms. Hepting, and then those reports will come to you as well. So we'll be keeping an eye on them, but it's a lot easier if they actually process all of the bills and manage those on our behalf. So if you don't have any other questions, I'll say.
Motion to receive and file administrators' report?
So moved. Report.
Home favor?
Aye.
Unfinished business coming before us. I'm going to jump into this. This is much more casual, the formality part of the meeting's over. What I'm going to do is I'm going to move these boards. Since you guys are all, you can't see very well. Can you guys see these from here?
This is high-tech stuff. This is why I think we cut the budget too much. We can't...
[laughing]
Further than crumbs.
Can't say we haven't been frugal.
I'm sure the people at home love this.
Can you have this set up on here, Bill?
Yes.
Click on the BLC.
I was going to say, boy, our chairman is, this technology that we're using is really awesome.
Pretty high-tech stuff. Speedy, speedy in part here. Well, four years ago, when I was becoming board chairman, Bill was becoming his position, we sat down and we put a different list of things together. These are the four-year-old list, and then we're going to talk about things today. And the reason I have this here is just to go over where we've been, direction we're going, future, you know, so on and so forth, so a little bit of all of the above. Four years ago, in the airport, it's probably just more of an update, but at the time, for those of you that were around, we still had Rick Orzell. Orzell Aviation was our fixed base operator. He was looking to retire and move on. We had some money set aside, and there was opportunity to get a homeland security grant through Jeff Reedlin, and collectively, at that time, we decided to move forward and purchase some facilities. We went out for an FBO search. We did an FBO search two or three different times previous to that, and we really didn't have much luck. This, the times we went out, we had four different respondents. I know a couple of you guys sat through there. Today, we've got Brad Schreiner out there running the airport. The airport, I think, is moving in the right direction. Fuel cells are up, hangars. I think we really got the right guy out there doing our thing. And that's just kind of, we're not going to debate, I guess, I don't want to say we're not going to debate, but if we, if we're happy with the direction that the airport is going, then, you know, this is more of an update on a lot of these things, not that we're going to, you know, make sweeping changes out there. But that's kind of where we're at today, and Bill and Carrie, you guys chime in a little bit too. We did move some of the stuff out of the big blue hanger there. We moved some of the homeland security items that we had, and we have another building that we did secure out at the airport. We actually got two, two buildings back out at the airport on back taxes. So some of the stuff is housed in the one. Right now, currently, we have some things that are housed in Marysville. That, that will come up a little bit further in the discussion, because we're going to have to find, find a home. Like I said, we'll talk a little bit more about that. County infrastructure, road commission support, road match program, been on the board 10 years now, $600,000. Today, it's $900,000. Dr. Kurt Westman, we talked a little bit about that today, David. They really can't spend any more money because they can't make the match, a lot of the townships. So that number works for them. I think the commitment that we've made to the road match program to continue that, we're one of 11 counties that do that, and I think it's very important to, to all of us to continue that. So I don't know if there's any...
Historically, the 23 townships within St. Clair County have the match program, and it's dollar-for-dollar match. We're putting in currently about $900,000 from the county and the townships, and it varies from township to township, but it's roughly historically been $2.50 for every dollar that the county has put in. So it's in excess of $3 million that's going into just the townships from the money match program, not in addition to other road programs that the county does within the townships, but just in that project alone, the money match. It's in excess of $3 million now, and it's very beneficial to the whole county, especially the township.
So that's kind of a little update, I guess, just on roads. But we always refer back to this. I come into Bill's office a lot of times, and we look where we're at, different things we've been able to accomplish, where are we going, and these are just, I think, a lot of times friendly reminders. Project management, our health department facility, we've talked about that before, probably the oldest building that we have. I know we've talked to Dr. Merkin time. The health department's not really sure with the regionalism, the health, that's kind of more, more to come, more to play out, where the, where the whole health department, the state and the regionalization piece of it can happen. It is a long-term facility. If we have to do something, that's, that's probably the worst building that we have in our fleet, so to speak, out of all the, all the buildings. Howard, you've said that a million times. You know, you look at this energy-efficient investments, we receive monies back... You know, you look at this energy efficient investments, we received monies back. However, many years ago, we received some pretty sizable grants, and we were able to do some efficiencies to the courthouse and, you know, some of those other things that we've been able to do.
Really, really resulting in a lot of reductions in our utility expenses here. Ron Marsh has done a great job working with some of the utility companies to make improvements to the buildings. We used a little bit of the federal energy efficiency money that we received to help with our building as well. But some of those funds in that particular program were used by the planning department and by the EDA to assist the private sector in making some energy efficiency investments in their buildings, too, to reduce their operating costs and hopefully as a way of helping them remain competitive and keep their business here in the county.
Do you guys want to chime in at any time? Budget fiscal priorities, multi-year budgeting, fund balance stability, those two. Four years ago, the picture was a whole lot more bleak than it is today. You know, being on the board ten years, Steve, Howard, you guys have surfed through the worst economic downturns since the Great Depression, you know? And finally, I got to give Carrie a lot of credit, and I give Bill a lot of credit. And I give Sean a lot of credit for the long-term budgeting model. You know, when he first introduced that, we use that model a lot, and that model's been pretty well spot on for us. So we've kept ourselves in pretty good shape, you know? We've been able to increase fund balance a little bit every year, and we've, I think, weathered the storm fairly well, all things considered, you know, when you look at it. Like I said, kudos to Carrie and Bill on that. Dispatch fee structure, I'm going to probably, that'll, that'll tie in. I'm going to, I'm going to go back to that because at the time, the dispatch fees, if you remember, they take the money out of the road match program, did this, that. I mean, we had eaten different formulas. I mean, it was, it was constant, constant battle. Now, the funding source today with some of the 911 monies, cell phone monies, you know, that before used to discharge landlines, now there's a sixty cents fee on all cell phone devices and stuff, so a much more stable funding source. But this dispatch fee thing, as, as many of us remember, those are pretty, those are pretty, pretty.
Just a comment on that dispatch fee. It took the state of Michigan a couple, two, three years to get their act together, to, to make it possible to get that sixty cents from devices so that we could provide that service to the entire.
Previously, the only funding mechanism was landlines. That was, and when I first started, ten years ago, there were a hundred and two thousand landlines, I remember that number. I don't even know where we're at today. We're probably half of that.
Oh, that's sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five thousand, yeah. So now they've spread it over, you know, cell phones, all of the above. So, but there again, this goes back to the four year thing ago. Internal reporting controls, those are some of the things, Carrie, that came out in our reports. On, every year, we get our, our reports from our accountants, and they give us different areas that we've got to work on and some of the things, and I know you look at those and address, have addressed a lot of those. There's not many things that come through on those reports as far as suggestions, changes, so on and so forth.
Some of those internal controls, Jeff, have to go back to Sean Broden putting them in after that jail fiasco. And we've been following those controls and reportings ever since, and I think it's working well.
Yeah. Capital investment planning, CIP, I think that's going to be on the list. You've got that on the new initiative, right, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to skip over that one. We'll get back to that when we get in that. Partnership, service consolidation, always looking at opportunity for partnerships. We have a contract with Lapeer County, the veteran service.
Actually, we did, and that particular contract is ended. We do still have a contract with Lapeer County for equalization services.
So any of these things that we can look at, even, even, even our backup system, when you talk about the dispatch, Lapeer County's our backup system. We're their backup. We were able to put that because we have the same systems, we have the same CAD, we have all that stuff as in place. So I mean, any, any, any opportunities we, we can look for outside, that's constant. Bidding professional services, that's going to be some of the, in the new initiatives, some of the upcoming bidding opportunities that we're going to talk a little bit about.
Well, and one thing that the board did with respect to professional services is you, some of the changes you made to the policies really streamlined that, that process for securing professional services. And it included the QBS, or the quality-based selection process that you have put in place. So it's made it much easier, resulting in much more effective securing of those professional
Some of the economic development, we actually have that in the updates on some of the goal settings. I'm going to come back to some of that. Marketing promotion, probably the biggest promotional piece that we have is the Discover the Blue piece, which you've actually even expanded that website now into. That website is the number four or fifth hit website. The state of Michigan, the Pure Michigan website is the number one hit website. Tremendous amount of hits on that. But what we've taken a look at to do this, if you look at Macomb County, they, they use their theme, Make Macomb Your Home. But their website is not just a tourist piece, it's also economic development, city. They have a much greater cross-section, I guess. And really, recent discussions that we've had through all the different entities, whether it's Community Foundation, Blue Beach Green, so on and so forth, the Discover the Blue brand is the brand that they want to get behind, and they want to expand that brand because it has been so successful. So instead of trying to create another brand, create another website, you know, use that as the main tool that you push people to, but then it also puts the links into many other things. It's kind of the Discover the Blue 2.0, as they call it right now, that, that's what they're going through, Work, Live and Play, very similar to how Macomb Counties does that because they, Tourism CBB spends a tremendous amount of money also just promoting that, but everybody agrees that it's been a very successful branding effort.
Can I comment on the EDA? Someone in the Times Herald Talk Back apparently is confused. They think that EDA is some governmental agency, and we're critical of Dan Casey's report on the successes of EDA. And I, I think it's important that we remind the community that EDA is an independent agency. We do support them, as do many of our cities and townships, but they're also supported by many businesses and industries.
I'm going to do a whole spiel on the EDA. Yeah.
So, but anyway, I think Terry London summed it up best when he was commissioner here. You need something in your community, someone to answer the phone when investors want to come to your community and spend their money, and EDA does that.
This whole developer, all the long fund, infrastructure improvement, streamlined business process downtown, that, that, I'm going to tie that in when we get into some of the new initiative stuff. Quality of life, you know, parks development. And when I first got on the board, we had one park, it was Goodles Park. We now have Lakeside Park, Woodson, we've got.
Columbus.
Columbus. Columbus. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've, you know, better facilities at Goodles. I mean, we really have expanded the parks.
One of the things that I think we really need to emphasize about our park development, because we do, and are one of the few counties in the state of Michigan that has a park and recreation millage, which we share with our townships and cities, we're able to match funding for grants from, let's say, Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund, and we've used that funding support to, able to expand these park and recreational opportunities to our
Jump over here, landfill. Always talk about our landfill. Increased municipal solid waste, as we know, our numbers are down. That we've obviously talked about landfill till we're blue and basically. Increased septic formation of the AOT. AOT is, we haven't formed it yet, but that's the company that we essentially were looking, well, we did form it, we just haven't found it. But that is a company that we have, that if we're ever able to patent that process, as all of you know, we have a patent on a bioreactor process. If there's ever an opportunity to sell that process, the AOT was the company that, I guess, for better or poorer words, would be the, would be the piece of it. Recycling program review, we went through that. Landfill rate, fee structure review. Finally, you know, bumped up some of the landfill rates. We've been talking about that. Like I said, this is four-year-old stuff. Reducing operational costs, that's when we brought in Jim Logstern, a time to go through, and Jim Logstern, Bob Ratz, are our consultants, former waste management guy who's been trash business forever, to look at everything operationally and make suggestions, and that resulted in a fairly substantial amount of savings at the landfill, just things that, we, some things we weren't doing that were best practices, essentially. So Jim's, Jim's still does the landfill stuff for us. Which, if you look back, this is, this is four years ago. This is probably four years plus, you know, when Bill was becoming our administrator, and I'm a big proponent of, these are the things that you, you put your things down. Haven't accomplished everything on the list, but we've accomplished quite a bit, and we continue. This is just continue, continuous reminders, I guess, of where we were at and, you know, some of the things that we've done. Steve?
That list was pared down from a number of other things we looked at four years ago. That was the hit list.
Yeah.
Down from another.
Yeah, we had a bigger list. We've worked on those things. We kept working on the list. So if you look at a lot of these things that we identified, there were, there's ninety to ninety-five percent of them that, that are happening in motion and, you know, all that above. That leads us into.
Jeff?
Just going out, every one of these things, I've already gone over. Every one of these has been a plus. An asset has been expanded for the county. You can look at the parking wreck, the landfill. Every one of these things that we've done has been a success story. There isn't a single negative on a single thing that we've taken, taken a look at over the last four years.
Yeah. It's kind of, it's kind of interesting when you look at it, and some of the other things that we're, we're talking about today. Just a little bit on some of the updates, where, you know, the FBO, the airport's the first part of it. I, we've already talked about the airport. Let's scroll down a little bit. RV building. Bill, you want to give a little bit of an update?
Sure. Could I, could I back up just for a moment on the airport? Last week, I met with the airport director, and they're beginning to put together their ten-year capital improvement plan for the airport. It's something they do. Every couple of years, they update it. It's something we have to have in place in order to qualify for funding through MDOT Aviation and through the FAA. That document has been drafted, and we will be working on finalizing it probably over the next two months, and then working with Ms. Hepting on how we might be able to fund the first couple of years of programs and projects that we know are coming up. And then we'll, the airport director will be coming to you and sharing that report with you and letting you know how she intends to implement that ten-year plan. It also is used as wrapped into the county's capital improvement plan. So her plan will be in place by the time we begin working in the countywide CIP. Okay. RV van building. The planning department has been working on this project over, I'd say probably the last three months. They have engaged the services of two local architect firms to provide us with some design concepts, just some boards, on what potentially could occur on the site. That work is not complete. We expect to receive it later this month from them. We'll then be sitting down with the city of Port Huron and the Board of Commissioners to share some of this information. And over the next couple of months, the intention is to take the resulting work that you and the city support and go out into the community, get their reactions to some of the concepts that are thrown out, find out what they like and what they dislike, and then sit down, analyze what some of this might cost, what we're able to afford, identify some partners that might be able to assist us with any of the resulting projects, and then move forward. So this is something that will continue to grow and evolve over probably the next ten to twelve months, that particular project. So watch for some updated information later this month and early next month on that project.
Convention center. I don't know if there's any questions there. That's tracking coming up here in the, I'm not going to put a date down, but springtime to be a good project. I know, I know quite a few of you guys have got an opportunity to go through there and take a look at it.
And certainly, there are a lot of management issues. You know, we've got several different groups that'll be working together to market the facility and to book the facility. All of them are meeting to make sure that they're coordinating their efforts and that they understand what it is, that their roles are. We don't want anyone stepping on others' feet, and we certainly don't want to double-book a facility. So we want to make sure that we approach this in a very eyes-open and cooperative fashion. So we'll continue working on many of the aspects related to the management of the convention center.
I'm just curious, is there a possibility we could get some kind of a report on what we can expect during the first year of operations of the convention center? In other words, if they've had experience of opening other convention centers the first year, what we can expect and that sort of thing?
Kruger's got that. If you, if you forward that in the document that Bill Kruger did, that, that whole thing's got all that information in it. It's pretty thorough.
Okay. I think I still have that.
If not, you can reset that out. That was part of the pro formas and things like that. And as I think everybody knows, not only the management for the convention center, but it's also the management for McMoran. SMG is the managing partner that they manage, Cobal Hall, they manage the DeVos Center, and they manage the Midlandale Event Center up in.
Jeff? Correct me if I'm wrong, and there's been, this management team has been, even though the facility's not open, when did they start actively managing you for putting your management team together and getting them on ground? Was that was a few months ago or?
Oh, yeah. I'd say that's probably been three months ago. And their latest staff person to join them is their staff accountant and marketing person.
Just bring me up to speed. The people that were in place three months ago and their purposes generally were what? What did we have in place?
We had, in place, we had a manager and a, pardon me, a general manager and an assistant general manager. As you may recall, the, we are sharing a management company with McMoran in the city, and SMG actually took on all of the existing employees at McMoran. They left employment with the city, and they are now employed by SMG. There was a new general manager brought in from a facility in South Bend. She moved from that facility to ours, and the general manager of McMoran is the assistant general manager for both facilities now. So staffing-wise, we've got a manager, a general manager. Currently, we also have a marketing person, but there's not a lot of time that's been devoted to our project yet. They're really focused on McMoran because they are open, they are operating.
What's your sense, Bill, of hitting the ground running? I mean, when, when it opens, is there going to be a lot of activity or just very little? Where do you have a sense, any sense of how that's going to go when it does open? It's going to be?
Sure. Well, conventions are generally booked several years out in the future. So I really don't expect that we're going to see any large conventions. Certainly, probably this year, 2015, we will see some. We will see some conferences and workshops, corporate conferences and workshops as well. I think what you will see right out, right out of the gate, the most of will be weddings and wedding receptions. You will see some corporate meetings as well. But right now, I do know there's a lot of activity with respect to. But right now, I do know there's a lot of activity with respect to weddings.
Okay, that's kind of where it's at. Dispatch fees, nine-one-one planning. One of the things that we are still working on is doing the rewrite of the nine-one-one plan. Currently, there's two F, or, everything's an acronym, and there's two PSABs. Everything's an acronym. Currently, there's two PSABs in St. Clair County that gets funding, which is essentially our central dispatch, which covers ninety-four percent of the county. Clay Township, which covers, Clay Township's portion, which is six percent. They at one time were our backup, you know, years ago. They're not our backup system anymore. So we are wanting to move to doing the rewrite on the nine-one-one. I know they're working on it. And I know that it is in the works. We still have an agreement for probably four years or so with Clay Township. But getting this done, I think, is important. One of the things with the dispatch fees, here's one of the things that we've got to discuss, is that, for example, this Clemis, that's an update that the different agencies want. There's additional costs that come with those updates on Clemis. Now, we, as a county, have, you know, we own the system, so to speak. We collect all the funds. Are we going to look as we expand services, increase, what's going to happen when the Motorola's come up for their ten-year, you know, when they're out of the contract and people have to renew the Motorola contracts for those individuals? Is the county collectively going to pay for everything? Or are you going to look for participation from these outside agencies? Because some of the concerns that I have is it's really easy when you're sitting there saying, "We need this, we need this, we need this, we need this." And by the way, county, you get all the money, so supplies for that, and it's five hundred thousand dollars. I'm just using that as a number, you know, I'm just throwing that out. But are we going to look for participation from, you know, the additional users in that system as they would like to have those upgrades? We don't have to make that decision tonight, but those are the things that we've got to talk about. And hence, came back to dispatch fees. You remember how that, how those discussions went eight years ago? So we're going to have to talk more about that, but I just want people to be aware of that as, you know, things happen. Economic development. Assist local communities funding. I think if you look at the role that the county plays, and this is me, I guess philosophically, and you can agree more this way or the other, with the county, cities through the bad economy have not replaced a lot of their staff, you know? So as people have retired out, they have not put people back in those places. If you look at, and I'll use the city of St. Clair as a great example, because we've been doing some work at county and some of the M-29 stuff, redevelopment of St. Clair. And cities had a lot of people retire out over the course of time, you know, shrinking revenues. They haven't replaced that. So these cities don't, I don't want to say run real deep, but they don't have economic development people that they used to have. They don't have these other different levels. So does the county, we have planning, we support our EDA, got lobbyists, you know, the lobbyists that work for the county. What involvement do we at the county's level get involved in these communities when they have projects that are of regional significance? And me personally, I think we have to assist them to help get them over the hump because they just don't have, you know, they just don't run that deep and have the ability to put those things together a lot of times. So if you're in a small community and you have an opportunity for something that has a huge impact, should the county assist those communities to get those projects done? That's something as a board that will have to philosophically, yay or nay? Because I mean, I can tell you how many meetings that I go to on a pretty regular basis. I know some of the other commissioners have sat in those meetings with me. Mike's been part of them and stuff, is to help putting things together. A lot of moving pieces, you know, MEDC, EAs, the grant writing, you know, and those types of things. I believe the county is the only one that has the ability, to be quite honest, to do it. If we don't want to stop, if we don't want to do that, then are those opportunities that we're just going to let go by? And that almost comes into then some of the funding. You know, we had an economic development fund that we established over many years ago, pre-tearing the jail down. We started putting money away for some of these capital projects and some of these economic development things. K-PAC's a great example. When the Keen plant came to K-PAC, they had to do some road improvements. It was a hundred thousand dollars at the time. The city of K-PAC can't write a check for a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but for a town, K-PAC, it's a big money. County had the money set aside, put the hundred thousand dollars in. It's a great story, a lot of jobs. County obviously receives a big taxing benefit from that going in. City of Marysville, ZF plant's another one that comes to mind. That was four hundred and some odd thousand, four fifty, four thirty, somewhere in that. The county put up that money so it can make the matching funds, which was roughly three million bucks, you know, and it was on the eighty-twenty, some of the class for the road part of it. And we had to do that to get the plan in. So the county's done a lot as far as the economic development piece, assisted in funding, but we haven't, I guess philosophically, yeah, we want to participate, we want to do this, but we have not set a, you know, a, okay, we're going to put a half a million dollars a year into this fund, a million, whatever that number may be. Is that something that this board wants to do? There again, if you have to go to K-PAC and you say, you know what, we're not going to do that, here's a great opportunity for, how many people they employ, three, four hundred people out there on the Keen plant? Talk to K-PAC, it's huge, you know? And are we going to do it or are we not going to do it? There again, who has the ability to fund that? Are we going to come back on the county? Now, as I tell everybody, we receive five point six mils non-homestead of any investment. The county actually receives, well, besides the school systems, the county receives a large taxing portion of it, much larger than the cities do. So any investment that happens in the county, the county receives, you know, a good portion of the taxes.
Jeff, I have a kind of a question, a comment. That's more of a comment than a question. You know, on these big projects that we've participated in the past on, usually they involve tax abatements as well. So the opportunity to set up a tax increment finance to repay us, is it really there in the short term? Because if their taxes are abated, so there's no additional taxes to capture. But I wonder if we shouldn't investigate, if we're going to be, if we're going to be in the long-term economic development business of setting up a tip of it follow after the tax abatements expire, that we capture those taxes to repay the economic development fund? So that we have sort of a revolving, revolving fund?
Comes back into one of these things we talked back before, you're going to look revolving funds on there. How do we set that up? We have, we've never established it. And Carl, you've got ten times more experience than I have in that because of your, obviously, previous-
Yeah. And I don't know if that's really feasible, but, you know, if we're going to make a strategic decision to get involved in this, is there a way for us, you know, yes, we have our five mils and we benefit that way, but, you know, the investment we put in upfront, we should recover, if possible, we should recover that upfront. And if tax payments are involved, then we can set up a tax increment. I mean, we should try and repay. And then that money can then be recycled back to other projects and we could have at least one other source of revenue for our economic development fund.
For example, the water project, we got involved with an higher township. It was, I think the county put in four hundred thousand four or five years ago, pre-before things really tanking? Because twenty-six mile road was kind of the next hub, no water, no sewer. They had the ability to put that money up, they were able to receive a sizable grant to do that. That was kind of the intent of that money at times, hook up and they tap into that. You know, they pay us back. I don't know if we've had much activity on that, very little. I mean, like I said, that was pre-things tanking. You know, that was probably a little different situation than having a actual plant coming. Yes, we are going to put, you know, a stake in the ground, but we need you to improve that road, you know?
You know, as you were explaining, this economic development is great for our community. The county as a community and the individual communities that are within it, but why shouldn't the, if we can help them get it established, I mean, they have the advantage of the jobs. We have the same advantage, but why shouldn't we try and recapture the money that we put into these projects? I mean, I understand they don't-
Oh, I don't argue with you at all. I just think it's one of those areas that we don't have a, if a company came to us tomorrow and it was the latest and greatest, you know, we need five hundred thousand dollars to do road improvements and we're going to put a thousand people to work. I don't want to say it's Chinese fire drill, but we just don't, we'd probably find it, figure out a way to get it done, so on and so forth, but we just don't have a clear-cut path, I guess, to how we do that. Is that something the board, going back to philosophically, do we want to establish that, kind of put some-
Carl, if I understand what you're saying, you're talking about when the tax abatement period runs over, then that money starts coming and you divert that money toward that-
Yeah, to first repay the county, then everybody can participate in it. And then-
But we have- You don't realize that though until the tax abatement period is ending.
Well, it depends on the tax abatement. I mean, some, it depends whether there's a hundred percent abatement or a fifty percent abatement. I don't really know. I'm not really-
Sounds like you're suggesting earmarking some of these funds. Because it wasn't the general fund that we allocated, or we were just earmarking.
What I'm suggesting is that we try and capture, you know, capture not only our portion, but the other taxing units portion of it too, until we get repaid and then it can be distributed.
We got no problems putting the money upfront, but we want to be the first ones to get our money back.
And we don't mind waiting, because that's what we have to do. But, you know, long-term, if we're really going to be into this economic development business long-term-
I'm going to defer to our, he was there in Wayne County after they cleaned house, just, right? For the record. Any suggestions as a commissioner, what you're talking about?
Depends on, again, the tax abatement. If we set up a tax abatement, fifty percent, there is still some capture. So if you do a tax of finance, so there's a possibility to capture, not as much, of course. But I know in Wayne County, most of the communities did, would do a fifty percent, you know, property tax abatement, and then the other fifty percent, it would go to the city, the county, or you could capture it with the structure. So, I mean, there's certain models that I-
Did you run into- Because I've talked to these guys in Macomb, I've talked to them in Macomb County quite a bit about it. They're in a different, because they have so many industrial parks, they have properties ready to go. You know, a lot of these situations we're running into are properties that are on the outskirts that don't have water, sewer, or those types of things. And what, I guess, what was your experience?
The other things that we've done in the past is we've gone to the USEDA and they've helped out with the infrastructure cost and that, and it's a long process. And that's when you have a company coming in, you're trying to recruit a company that has a hundred, two hundred employees, they're looking, you know, ten to twelve months out, they're not looking two years. So it's a process, there's a lot of moving parts that, but there's certain models that you put together to show the commission and the local county this time.
I would think one of the things that's really going to, just, you know, running this through my mind, it just kind of came to me as a thought of it, is that what's really going to reduce the capture is that there's not going to be a personal property tax. We used to be capturing all the taxes and all the equipment, and now with the new exemption of personal property, there isn't going to be the personal property, really valued personal property captured in many cases with, I'm sure with ZF, that was the biggest portion of their investment, was all the equipment, not just the steel building.
Just to comment here on what the direction I think you're going, Carl, is that, you know, if we could capture that and we get that funds back, we dropped about a half million dollars between the Marysville project and the K-PAC project. Well, if we could recapture that, then we could help other communities if an opportunity comes to them, because we've got a fund to do it. As it is, we don't have a mechanism in place to recapture those funds. They're gone. Now, they helped two communities tremendously, but I think, I like your approach.
If it's possible, I mean, maybe what I'm talking about is just as part of this discussion, have our administration take a look at that and see if, because when people are coming in the door, that's the time to set it up. After it's set in place, we go to them and say, well, now, how would you like to answer the money?
We're not going to Marysville or to K-PAC to do that.
Wouldn't that have the opportunity to chill the investment, Carl?
It doesn't chill the investment because they're paying the tax no matter what. So it's where the tax money goes.
I think you got an answer for the question. Each individual case of any company, whether it's a hundred employees, three hundred employees, you're going to have to take each one individually. Then you're going to have to take, if it's a five-year or ten-year, it's going to be an agreement made up for that tax abatement, whether it's Marysville, K-PAC, wherever that happens to be, they'll set that up. If they're making widgets, this widget goes like gangbusters for three to five years, they go out of business, there'll be no recovery. You're going to have to take each one individually, but the cost of doing business in economic development, we've got to proceed with that without having a footprint in it. If we can recover the money, fantastic, but we still have to do that for economic development in St. Clair County. But each one's going to be individual.
I agree with the point that that isn't going to fund. We're going to be in the, putting money into it for a while, but we should, I think, look at trying to, and it would be very gradual, it'd be a really long-term thing to look at. If we can't, we capture it, I mean, why should it go to the others when we put the money up?
Once the taxes get collected at, or the, if you drop the property taxes, we'll get it anyways, even if it goes to the general fund. You're saying the re-
Well, but the difference is, we would get everybody's, all the taxing jurisdictions' taxes until we're repaid.
Well, every case is going to be different. Whether it's city of Port Huron, you take over at Dove Street, and I'm going to guess that there's at least twenty percent of the buildings that are vacant, they're not sellable buildings to put a business in without major refurbishing. So some companies would rather rebuild from scratch someplace else in the county, rather than refurbish an existing building. So you're not going to recruit those. Some of those companies from Dove Street have left.
I think that economic development issue is worth doing a call, workshop, a call whatever specifically. Bring Dan Casey, bring Mike, bring some of the people in to figure out exactly what we're talking about. To my point, that would be, and that's what I'm trying to get a feel for tonight, that's high on my list of priorities. And I think if that's high on the list of board's priorities and that's one of the initiatives that would come to the top of the list, let's get this meeting together and talk about these things and get some of the, you know, different ideas. Landfill, that's, we constantly talk landfill. Retirement healthcare, we just went through our actuarial, retirement healthcare pension, we just had our actuarial report. We are eighty-six percent funded on the pension piece. We are twenty-six or twenty-eight percent on the healthcare piece. Five years ago, if we made no changes, we would have been broke today on the healthcare piece, you know? So we went through the changes, made the changes. Still in great shape, much better shape. I think in that actuarial report, if there's one percent growth, it's like eleven years. If there's five percent growth, there's whatever, up to seventeen years with a moderate kind of growth. That gives us, I think, some time to take a look at what's going to come down, because you know, with national healthcare and what the effects are going to be on the county. I got to say, we kicked the can, well, we did kick the can down the road, but at least we kicked it further. We made some necessary changes and, you know, we weren't afraid to tackle those issues. We put work groups together, had thirteen separate two-hour work group meetings with people that were for against the issue, that were against the issue, and all the above. Two big things that came on there was some design plan changes, you know, with prescription piece of it, taking the post- And then we did the hardship, the hardship piece of it that we put in. At least they have over 100-plus people in hardship. And hardship said if you collect a pension from the county, that was 25,000 or 20,000 dollars or less, you were eligible for hardship. I personally know two guys that are millionaires that are on the county, were on the county hardship plan there, and they weren't hardships, just because of those rules. Today, I think there's 18, there's under 20 people that had, now you actually have to take those things in. So it's, it's, it's looking to clean up those little things. Uh, talked to the retiree luncheon about it, here the other day went over, talked to them. They still hate us, but it's another story. No, I talked, you know, it's like anything, it's, it's tough when you're in our position, because, you know, promises and those types of things, it's like we have to address the issues. We brought them in, talked to them about it, had to make some changes. We're, we're doing okay there. A thing, the thing that comes up a lot and that gets put, um, on the table is Oakland County is fully funded, uh, they took a bond out to cover, you know, their liability, and then Macomb County's in the process of doing that. Talked to Carol a little bit about it, I talked with Carrie about it, but that number for us is like $9 million a year out of a $56 million budget. It would take us $9 million a year to cover the bond to fully fund. Oakland County and Macomb County aren't good examples to St. Clair County. You look at Oakland County's budget, and I've been wanting, I put this out because they always, it's an $800 million budget. It's seven and a half times larger than us, we're, uh, 56 million, 55. If you did apples for apples, it would put us at about 420 million, would be comparable as far as numbers. Their employees, 3,000 employees, I want to say, 3,500, wherever. It just, it's, that Oakland County-St. Clair County comparison is a bad comparison. We don't have that kind of tax base. You know, it's a whole lot easier to do those things when you have a whole lot of money, you know? So I just wanted to talk about that, because Macomb County's in the process of doing it right now. And we're going to go sit down with, I talked to Dodd Brown, we're going to go sit down with them and take a look and see what they did, but I mean, at the end of the day, I know what it is, they got, they got cash.
Well, I think it'd be interesting for us to actually, if you've got some numbers on that, to see those numbers, so we can be, we understand it.
But it's the very first question that the retired, well, Oakland County took a bond in their fully funded, Oakland County, I mean, that, that question.
And I think it would help our credibility with the retirees if we showed them what Oakland County did and, and how it relates to us and actually lay it out.
I think that I would say, and I mean, the comment above, they still hate us and kind of give, you know, life's crack about that. They appreciate us coming in, telling them what we're working on, the reasons why, you know, I mean, the biggest thing is, you know, what happened years, and say years ago, the previous is, the worst part's not knowing, you know? And when you make changes and they don't know what's coming, there's no way that they can tell us that they did not know that this was not coming. I bent over backwards to have meetings, to have everybody involved in those meetings, like you said, pro, against, you name it, so.
I, I've, I've heard that, and if, if we already have the numbers, as a commissioner, I'd like to see those numbers.
It gives you the ability to respond intelligently to the question.
You know, I, I don't want to turn to somebody and say, you know, Howard, we can't afford it because we're not like Oakland County less. That's not a good translation.
No, we, we need to, we need to, we need to sit down with those numbers. Like I said, Carrie's already ran the preliminaries, I don't know if I'm correct. It was, it was $9 million based on a 16-year, I think you got a fund back in that period. So if we choose to do that, we'd have to find $9 million in our general fund budget.
That's fascinating to me, and I just, I think it's, I'd like to see the report and have a chance to talk about it.
Uh, wetland mitigation in Palm Lot, Robyn, Robyn Mary talks about that, wetland mitigation in Palm Lot. The, um, property behind the day treatment night watch facility, we have a five-acre parcel there, I think we use a couple acres, there's a couple more that are available there. Um, we're in the process of mitigating that out, going to mitigate that out, because a sheriff and a prosecutor are looking to put an impound lot over, um, behind, behind that, or right there, so, so lock it up.
Yeah, I want to put a plug in there for our county drain commissioner, because he's working with us on this to get the land that we're, we're going to be able to mitigate on that. And our new drain commissioner, he has done an amazing job as far as maintenance within the county. He's come to us to get additional funds, and I believe moved expanded his budget, or he has actually did it by five times what his budget was when he first took office, so. And he's working with this great, get wetland mitigation.
He's been very proactive on wetland mitigation, I think, and an issue that we've had in this county for a long time. And it's nice to have that ability when a project comes along, that Bob has parcels identified and stuff, he's been, yeah, he's been very proactive on that. Um, yeah, that's going to, that's, that's initiative for this year, we want to.
Yeah, if you, if you recall, the, um, the site we needed to mitigate was the wetland area behind the existing day treatment night watch, that we need both for expansion of day treatment night watch and for the construction of the impound lot. The original site that we had identified was on some landfill property that we acquired, and a decision was made last year to look for a different location to mitigate, uh, the day treatment facility. So until we got the, um, the actual permit from the EPA, we can't begin that construction. Now, we've gotten a verbal approval on the new location, property owned by the drain commissioner. That new location has been identified, we've gotten a verbal from the EPA, but until we get that actual permit in hand, we won't be going out for bids for the construction of that project. But it is something that will be going on this year, so we can close that project out.
Um, new initiatives, I don't even know if this is necessarily, new initiative, but budgetary discipline, financial planning. Carrie does a great job, works with department heads. If we look at this year's budgeting process, I don't know about the rest of yous, I didn't get one phone call, anyone yelling and screaming at me, it went great.
Well, I, I, I am, I, I agree, I think it's been a fantastic program, but, you know, this is an area that I, all I know is what I've read in the newspaper. But our, our, I believe our biggest taxpayer in the county is Detroit Addison.
Correct.
And I believe that, um, they're the biggest taxpayer because of the power plants, at least the, the two power plants that are outside St. Clair and along the St. Clair River. And there is, uh, articles weekly now about, um, new EPA regulations that may affect those plants, that the federal government is considering.
Because of coal burn?
Because they're coal burners. And I, I think in terms of, you know, budgetary discipline, financial planning, that we need to get a handle on what's, what's going on there.
Because if. Detroit Addison is 11% of our total SEV in the whole county. 12, that's 11%. For example, Harbor Beach, this is no secret, they're tearing the Addison plant down on Harbor Beach. It has 80% of their budget in Harbor Beach. That's how big of an impact that these Addison, to your point, one of those things go away, you're going to be screaming bloody murder. I mean, those, they pay serious taxes.
And, and, and if, if we can see that they are going to go away, in terms of budgetary discipline, we stuck, we have to start making cuts. As soon as we know that it, it is going to be, if it's going to be a fact, that we're going to lose that tax base, the sooner we act, the less severe the cuts are going to have to be. We wait till.
Is that something SFA would look at, for us?
I, I, I believe it could be very helpful.
Some of the discussions, because I've got a really good rapport with Ron Chris, our government affairs director, one of the things that they've said is the places that they're going to have to convert and rechange, they're going to look at the areas that they have transmission lines, all that stuff is already in. One of the, one of the feathers, I guess, in our cap is they have so, so much of the transmission capabilities already in place with those two plants versus some of the other places that they have. But yeah, definitely something you need to be concerned.
It was an article last week, when Time週er carried all these articles about all the gas mains and oil lines and everything, they did talk about DTE being a major gas company, and the potential is, as I recall the article anyway, of maybe converting these plants from, from coal to gas. So, but that's, I mean, we're talking 10% of our taxes.
11% total.
And we, I think, as part of our budgetary discipline, we, we have a great, I'm, I'm really impressed with the, with the modeling that the staff does on the budget year, you know, the last two years, I, I think it's, it's extraordinary.
Look at some scenarios.
Yeah, one, one of those plants is 800 million roughly SEV, the other one's 450. I mean, that's how crazy those, I mean, that's how huge those things are. We get that taxation thing every year as far as the top payers at Gray Hill gets us, you know, that. And what's surprising, you talk about these pipelines, pipelines, these guys are six or seven, you know, ITC two, if you look at the top 10, ITC with their transmission lines, um, Enbridge, you know, with the pipelines, they pay, pay a lot of money on those things.
We, we receive a lot of money?
We receive a lot of money.
Actually, we're, we're pretty fortunate that, uh, with the utilities, the way they're set up and are with Detroit Addison sitting down there with those plants and with the pipelines going through our area, you know, people sometimes complain about those pipelines, but it's going to be a blessing in the end for us, it's going to help them, uh, convert their, their plants over is what it's going to do, it's going to really be.
The top 10 thing from Gray Hill, get that, just that report that he does every year and distribute that, because when you look at that to see who the top 10 payers are, you don't realize that how much money they pay.
Well, and the one thing that surprised me, uh, was the report that the EPA furnished us last year, was that the value of the commercial in Fort Grasham Township, the mall, all the commercial development there, was equal to the value of our entire industrial base minus Detroit Addison. Now, that says.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty staggering when you think about it.
Kind of looking back at, you know, the other counties you're talking about, what that really says is, we've got a very small industrial base compared to other, other counties' proportionally. And that makes it very difficult for us to provide services, because these big industrial plants, they don't require a lot of local government services, but they pay a lot of local government tax. Where residents, as a class of taxpayers, don't pay as much taxes, they consume services.
Yeah, quote, it's proverbial residential, you don't make money on, costs you money, I guess, commercially, you make money, you make a lot of money in industrial, taxing.
I haven't seen a study for St. Clair County before here, but generally speaking, that's what happens.
Capital improvements, planning, existing program priority. We, uh, we used to do the CIP for a long time, got away from it, you know, we're talking, well, you know, what we did, but really, um, having more people participate, even smaller projects, Billy, you're talking about the threshold, just, just, just for.
Right, we've been talking internally, the current threshold for projects that drop into the CIP program is $100,000. However, if you get four, five, $10,000, $20,000 projects, that adds up really quick, and it begins to have, um, quite an impact on our annual budget. So, one of the things that we're, um, going to propose to the board this year is that we develop a, a lower threshold, and, um, we not only create a CIP for those larger projects, but we begin including smaller projects as well. We'll have to kick around some ideas on what that threshold might be, or the type of projects they may be as well. But I think they're, they're very important as we look at getting a handle on financial planning.
They'll make your projections so much more accurate, it's got to handle that.
New projects identifying, hopefully none of us end up at the first one anytime soon. County morgue, um, McLaren is, um, going through the big expansion, our morgue is currently housed over at the Corrigan Hospital. They're going to be changing that, they want to continue to have the morgue located there, but it is going to require some, uh, capital improvements, I guess, to, to give you the space, but you've got to put the, put the stuff into it. Our morgue, if you, if anybody's ever been over the morgue, um, it's really tiny over there. They, they're, you know, busting out at the seams, it is, it's small. But we're going to have to put some money into that. Drain office, uh, talked to Kurt Weston, they need the space. Drain office is going to be out on the street here probably in the next year or so, so we're going to have to find a place to locate the drain office. Dive Mat Hazmat Building, Dive Team Hazmat Building, it's part of clearing out the buildings at the airport. County has a lot of stuff, and I know we've been trying to get rid of some of that, you know, some of the stuff. And we currently rent a facility down in Marysville right now, but that was a short-term solution to, you know, a long-term, I mean, probably, we're going to have to, we're going to have to find a spot for, for Bob, as a detail, getting a office for the drain office and buying, uh, someplace to be able to store some additional stuff. But I did talk to Kurt Weston, Wiley is going to, you know, they probably got an ear on that. Um, we're going to have to find, find a, find a home for him. And we're going to have to find somewhere to relocate the Dive Team Hazmat, that these are, those are going to be immediate, um, you know, immediate needs in the pretty near future.
Yeah, and, and there's actually some alternatives, we've already begun looking at for the drain office. Dive Team, we have renewed our contract with them, um, owner of that property, but when we began working with them a year ago, they made it clear that, um, that we're not interested in selling the building, this was not going to be a long-term solution for us, and we are going to have to find a, a site that obviously would be centrally located, um, to house that equipment, the material, and the necessary workshops to maintain that equipment.
See, the hazmat stuff, a lot of that stuff has to be, not all of it, but stored in heated storage. I mean, everything we could put in cold storage, we have certainly located at the airport with the building, then we got back a lot of the trailers, you know? Um, one positive about being close in proximity to the lawyers, all the stuff with the homeland security monies that we received, we received a lot of, um, stuff that goes along with that, but you have to store it, you have to house it. And when we did the last thing, they, they cleared out quite a bit of things. I think for a while, we just, we got, we got a lot of things and put them in our hangar and then, you know, look at the inventory, and then when we finally made them, um, when we finally moved out of the little, the little hangar, that, they got rid of a good portion, but they still have a lot of different things, and, um, you said those humble stuff, you just can't park it outside, so.
And on the drain office, is that just office space, or do they need vehicle storage and that sort of thing?
Well, they, they certainly have equipment that needs to be stored and, and space to work on that equipment. The office does not necessarily need to be in the same building or even in the same area. You know, most of the drain commission's work is in the outlying areas, so it would make a lot of sense to put their equipment warehouse in downtown Port Huron or Marysville, since most of the work is out west and down river. So, um, certainly as we look at the drain office, we've got to look at other locations for their storage equipment versus space they need for storing records, for offices where individuals can come in and apply for permits, and just area that staff can work out of.
I know you've talked before that there are some opportunities, maybe even internally in the county, and, uh, I think those should be open, yes.
And really, that's under just to let you know that we're going to have to do something with them.
It's about, why is the road commission office needs growing?
I just asked Curtis, because Bob had said he was getting kicked out, I called Kurt and said, hey, is this true? And he said, yeah, that was true, I didn't question what they were doing at the road commission, but.
We've been, we've been reducing the budget, we've been cutting back, we're not
Kurt and said, hey, is this true? And he said, yeah, that was true. I didn't question what they were doing at the Road Commission, but-
We've been, we've been reducing the budget, we've been cutting back, we're not growing at the-
You know, if the Road Commission, that's their building, I don't think the Drain Office, they pay rent to them out there right now, they just give them the space, it's been there, he's been out there for however long and, you know, we don't really have control over the Road Commission building and those kinds of things and they don't, they need, like you said, they just, I didn't ask Kurt specifically what they were doing, he just said, yeah, that they need additional space.
You know, I'm just-
Yeah, to why?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every, every department can't have road-
Yeah. Cooperative governmental efforts, sharing services, expanded opportunities, cities, villages. Bill, you want to chime in a little bit of this? I think you always look, you know, if there's offers that you can share, that kind of thing, some of the-
Yeah, the, you know, our relationships with cities, townships and villages have been improving dramatically over the last probably five or six years. There is a lot of interest in sharing services and the potential of combining some departments, but that's certainly something that we need to discuss here with you to find out the level of interest that may exist. And from time to time, opportunities may come up that we don't feel would be in our best interest. But that's an, an issue that comes on, I would say in the last six or eight months, it's come up a number of times and we need to begin some serious discussions.
I think a lot of, too, with the planning, you know, our planning department does a lot of master plan updates for municipalities. You even look at, you look at our equalization, for example. When Kimmel Township had to go out and get their properties reassessed, they contacted the county for reassessment.
Services.
We didn't have the capacity to take that on at the time. So, when you go, go back to this planning thing, we're doing a lot of other things. The county, it goes back to the shrinking budgets, cities have not been able to backfill, you know, everyone's cut, 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 somebody retires, you don't replace that, next thing you're down three or four people, you spread the work over what you have in the city. You just, they don't have that extra person hanging around to, you know, do these other things anymore. So, a lot of times, they essentially turn to the county, probably more so now than they ever have because of the services that we have and the size of the organization.
Simple example of that would be, I think, Fort Grasham or Grant Township, either the master plan or-
Grant.
Right, so by doing that, contracting with the county, it saves the, in this case, township money to get the professional services that the county has to draft the master plan. Currently, Riley Township and Berlin are working together on their master plans and should have proposed them in the next six months.
Media relations, something we talked about. Actually drove Tony around for half a day here and showed him all the county facilities the other day. And probably trying to work with, getting on a monthly basis, having a set monthly schedule just to go over some of the different things that we're working on, you know. Let's see, improve, just Tony's, Tony's new, you know, and trying to get him information, get him up to speed on all the different things that we do. We do a lot of things and it's, you know, even sitting in our position, takes you a few years just to figure the budget out and where the money flows and goes and all that kind of stuff. So, we're going to make a, we're going to make a real good effort on just having a real set schedule where he comes in, sits down and we just, we just, you know, talk about different things.
It's a great idea.
I think it was your idea, as a matter of fact, wasn't it?
That's why we-
So, it was a great idea.
Even if I say it myself.
You know, I mentioned it many times, but I didn't think you were listening to it. Occasionally I listen to you. Here's something, upcoming bidding opportunities. Banking services, workers' comp, fleet, I mean, what, you know, when I look at different things like this, you know, like your banking services, we went through it five or six years ago when we did it. If there's something like that, bidding your banking services out is a huge undertaking. Is that something we need to look at doing or are we happy with the current provider that we have and the service that we have if we feel that we're getting a good service? I just don't want to put people through exercises just because when I say, yeah, you know, we can dream up stuff all day long, but yours truly's got to, you know, follow through and do-
We're like, we're like the cities you were describing before. We've reduced our staff so much that we don't have the capacity to just pick and do all of these different things. And I think one of the benefits of what you're doing tonight is we need to set priorities for the staff. And, you know, in, in terms of those, like banking services and workers' compensation administration, perhaps, you know, Kerry has gone through their professional organization, you know, benchmark with some other people and see if, if others are getting these services cheaper. And if they're not, then maybe it says to us it's not worth the investment of staff talent. On the other hand, if there are substantial savings to be made, it's worthwhile to make.
I think about the insurance, when we went through the insurance deal, however many years ago, that was MMR, we opened a bid and did this, and that is just a ton of work to bid out, county services, went through it all and it came back, kept the current provider and made no changes and, you know, it was-
And when you're, when you're self-insured, what you're really looking at is how well they administer it. I mean, it's not really-
This is county's liability insurance at the time. You know, we spent-
MM, MRA or-
Yeah, we spent 750, 800,000 a year on that. And that was, that was a ton of work. I mean, so, so just to, like you said, I think there's certain things that say we're not happy, but there, I think, I think for administration and accounting to be able to say, you know, I think there's some areas that we need to look at, I recommend that, you know, these are probably some of the things that we look at. I know we're going through the fleet maintenance portion right now, you know.
In, in our negotiations, et cetera, with the bargaining units, you know, sometimes issues with workers' compensation administration come up. And I think we need to, and probably our staff needs to look at those and say, all right, there's a balance of, you know, cost control versus, you know, making sure that our injured workers are fairly compensated, you know. What is, what is our experience? Maybe, maybe in your department, something like that, though, you could talk, talk about something like that. It's not just the money part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to comment on fleet maintenance. When I first joined the board and I asked about, you know, what it was costing to maintain our fleets, I could not get any kind of an answer that was desirable. Now that we have a fleet maintenance provider, we at least know what it's costing. Problem is that some of the department heads, some of the elected officials have said, it's costing too much, we can save you money if we do it. I, I don't have a problem turning that over to department heads, elected officials that want to run their departments, none whatsoever. But I do think as a commissioner, I want to know what the total cost is to the county to maintain those fleets and, and keep them in, in quality condition, for the safety of our employees and for nothing else. And I heard some real stories about the condition of some of our, our cars that our employees were expected to go to work in. And, you know, it's just unacceptable not to have them in a safe, operable condition. But I, I don't have a problem looking at that if we can come out with some mechanism to track the cost of maintaining our fleet. You know, if the sheriff thinks he can do it cheaper by, you know, having oil changes or whatever, I don't have a problem with that. I just want to know that the cars are, trucks are maintained.
Come along ways, I can, my reflection, I guess, in 10 years on the board, we put in purchasing, you know, and I think, you know, purchasing was great for some of the big stuff. And I think we got a little, quite honest, too far the other way with purchasing, you know, hey, I need a pen and I need it today, not two weeks from now, you know. We went kind of to the head extreme of it, but when I look back, like copier contracts, if you remember, we had individual apartments that would just go out and get all the copiers and we didn't have it under one consolidated deal. One of the first things that they did was they went and put the copier contracts off a bid on one, you know, set deal. That was like a $12,000 savings, you know. I mean, the number was absolutely astronomical. We never did any of those types of things before, you know. So, we've bid out a lot of different things in the last, Kerry, you've been here a lot longer, and we've bid out a ton of different stuff, which is great because, you know, we've saved a lot of dough at times when we head to. And so, like I said, these are some of the bidding things. My thought on it is if it's an area that is addressed by administration, perhaps of an area concerned and that's maybe an area that they need to really take a look at and stuff. Because anything like us, we're cut to the bone. I don't, I don't, I don't want to create tremendous amount of work, you know, because we've had, you know, our purchasing, we don't have the purchasing department that we used to have, so those works get spread out. Just a, a balancer, I guess, as far as what we're putting, putting on, putting on administration. Impump lot, that's just a, talking about the impump thing. This is Bill, Great Top's Bad Idea, ORV and Golf Cart. Any comments on that at all?
Not totally bad, it's not necessarily the best one, but hey, you throw it out there and if they like it, you go for it. They don't, you don't, I, I will say that it, the state did help us out, they did pass a golf course, or golf cart resolution or law, Osborn 5045. And so, they have separated out the golf cart from the ORV, if somebody wants to go ORV, but we did do the go-around, we did meet with all the officials that wanted to talk about it and it was pretty much 50/50. So, unless somebody, there's a dying interest to push this forward, we're going to leave it sitting in the background.
This list that we have, and this is just a couple of us sat down and put it together, if there's any other things that any other commissioners want to see put on the list, so to speak, and this is, you know, this is for conversation sake, I'd like the people to take a look at this and then come back and say, you know, I think this, 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 this is impressive. For example, me personally, the economic development piece of it, I think we need to have a, you know, workshop or whatever, call it, in the near future to, that's high on my list of priorities because I think that's one of the things. If there's any of those other types of things that you guys have an interest in, let us know. But I think when you look at that list and you go back to four years ago here, you know, and, and what we've been working on, it's pretty consistent, you know. And I think it gives Bill, and I, and I know it does, I mean, the biggest thing that we have to do as a board is give administration direction as to kind of what the flavor of the board is because the last thing we want to do is have them go work on something and bring it back to us and go, why the heck did you guys ever work on that? Spent a bunch of time, we never had an interest in doing that anyways, you know, so. Kind of nice sermon.
Yeah, we've reached out to department heads and asked them to provide us with some ideas and some issues to add to this list as well. We'd really like to come back to the board at a future meeting with some ideas added to this from both department heads, from yourselves, if you've got some thoughts. And sit down and start developing some priorities. If there are issues that you feel are on the boards from a couple of years ago that we need to revisit, please share that with us. Take this document back with you, study it, mark it up and let us know what you're thinking. We'll certainly reach out to groups like our lobbying firm too and see if they've got some ideas that they might suggest that we undertake. We'll talk to some other groups in the, in the community as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to receive and file the information received tonight.
I'll support the-
All in favor?
Aye.
Germent.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We hope you enjoyed this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. Your St. Clair County Commissioners broadcast these meetings on Comcast Local Access Channel 12 every Wednesday night at 9:00 PM. If you have any questions on any part of this program, please feel free to contact your St. Clair County Board of Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information, the meeting agenda and videos of the meetings at www.stclarecounty.org.